America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting agenda carries. We do have one person signed up today, and that's Mike Silvestri. Before he shares his comments, I will read a little something here. Good evening, community members. We are now entering the public comment period of our meeting. Although we typically do not welcome public comments during work sessions, we understand how critical the topics on today's and today's agendas are. Today's agenda is. Therefore, we're making an exception and allowing public comments for these sessions. Please note that during this period, the board is here to listen. It is not a time for discussion or immediate responses. Rather, it's an opportunity for us to hear your perspectives. We take your comments seriously, and we may need time to process and research the issues you raise. We will address your concerns either at a future meeting or have the appropriate staff member follow up with you as needed. Please address your remarks directly to the board rather than to the audience. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess until orders restored. Additionally, if you prefer, you can submit written comments to the board instead of speaking during this period. These written comments will be attached to the board minutes for transparency and record keeping. Public comments will be three minutes, and the board clerk will manage the timing to ensure fairness and efficiency. We will enforce this time limit to ensure that you have an opportunity to share. So the board welcomes President of the SFT, Mike Silvestri, to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Cotto. Thank you for the opportunity. As the board is aware, we had nearly twenty-five percent of our membership respond to a survey on the top of screening devices in which we actually use the term metal detectors. And while the board has access to all those results, I would like to touch on a few details here tonight. Before that, though, I would like to state the following. As the board has stated, this can be an extremely contentious and emotional issue. Personally, unlike my cellphone statements last night, I'm extremely distressed and conflicted by this topic. We, as adults, have created a society for our students in which we even need to have a conversation like this. No one should be happy if these devices are implemented. We should only reflect on the failure and what we can do to improve our society so these things are not necessary. Also, especially to my SFT sisters and brothers, please know that no matter someone's opinion on this issue, it is grounded in the belief that they are doing right by our students and your coworkers. And we should treat each other in that same manner. So, to the survey itself. Overall, when asked if they supported metal detectors being installed in their building, seventy-four percent of elementary members supported it, with only twenty percent opposing. Sixty-seven percent of middle school members supported it, twenty-six percent opposing, and sixty-six percent of high school members supported it, with twenty-nine percent opposing. I believe these sentiments are directly related to the following. When asked about how safe people feel at work, eighteen-point-six percent of elementary members stated they felt somewhat unsafe or unsafe. That rose to thirty-five percent at the high school. And further concerning, at our middle schools, fifty percent of SFT members stated feeling somewhat unsafe or unsafe at work. When asked how this might change if metal detectors were put into place at the elementary, those feelings of unsafe or somewhat unsafe dropped to four-point-four percent, and at the middle and high school, an average of ten-point-four percent between the two. This level of support did not come without concerns, though. As over fifty percent of our members, even those who expressed support for these, the implementation, expressed concerns about the following: negative perceptions of metal detectors in schools, the practicality of people going through them on a daily basis, and the fact that they are not a hundred percent effective. Some of our members also pointed to research stating that they had no effect on the safety of schools in general. As a leader myself, who ultimately has to make decisions, I very much go back to the following regarding the installation of these screening devices. First, unlike again the effects of cellphones on students and what we should do, I do not know if I am right on this topic or not. However, what I do know is a large majority of my union sisters and brothers support them, and their installation will increase their feelings of safety as your employees in the workplace. And finally, as SFP president, if tragedy occurred, I would never want to be in a position with a family member saying, "I did not do everything I could to protect their loved one." Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments. And we will recap the cellphone policy, and I'll just share a few things with you. As we revisit the topic of our district cellphone policy, it's essential that we reflect on what we've learned over the years. One thing is clear: communication has been a significant challenge. The lack of effective communication surrounding this policy has unfortunately led to a sense of complacency. Many have felt that the policy was not consistently enforced, and this raises an important question: why hasn't the policy worked effectively for the past thirteen years? To move forward, we must continue to analyze and reflect on the root causes of these issues. Was the policy too vague? Or were the expectations unclear? Did we lack the necessary accountability or resources to support the enforcement? These are all critical questions we must address. We also need to consider how we can improve communication, both in clarity and frequency, to ensure that everyone in our district understands the policy and its importance. Moreover, it's crucial to think about how we can reinforce this policy consistently across all schools, so it doesn't fail, fall by the wayside again. This may involve providing better support for staff, establishing clear guidelines, and ensuring a regular, ensuring regular check-ins to make certain the policy is being followed, as recommended by SFP President Mike yesterday. As we continue this discussion, we must ask ourselves: should the policy stay the same? Be revised? Or updated? Are we truly considering both sides of the research on cellphone use? We need to weigh the pros and cons, particularly in relation to our students' academic, social, and emotional learning. These factors are all vital as we work to create a policy that not only addresses concerns, but also supports the well-being and success of all of our students. Ultimately, our goal is to learn from the past and create a more effective policy that truly works for our district, or remain with the same policy, but again, that we implement it with fidelity. We are dedicated to keeping these discussions open and transparent, inviting input from the public, our students, the community, and our staff. Together, we can develop a policy that meets the needs of everyone involved. So yesterday, Principal Green joined us to outline how the high school plans to implement the cellphone policy aligned with the current policy starting in September. And again, I want to reiterate, that was the high school. Okay? And then SFP President Mike Silvestri and Vice President John Yumkin presented data and shared their members' perspectives, as he did today, on the need for stronger parameters, but this was specifically around the cellphone usage. We will continue our conversation for about twenty minutes, providing an opportunity for the Policy Committee to gain a comprehensive understanding of the staff, parents, students, and board's views on cellphone usage. I do want to mention a couple of things, though. The Policy Committee, once we discuss this again today, we revisit it, it will go back to the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee consists of Vivian Parsons, Nahalani is the chair, Jamaica Miles, Superintendent Cotto, Deputy Superintendent Joe DiCaprio, and then quite often, they invite guests pertinent to the topic to be part of the conversation as well. So what will happen is that this conversation and all the feedback will go back to the Policy Committee, and then they will devise a policy based on all the feedback and then present it back to the board. And then we will have time to review it, to provide feedback, and hopefully, we will vote and pass it before the beginning of the school year, so everyone in the school district knows exactly what the expectations are around cellphone policy. Okay? Does that mean? Okay, so the Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for August nineteenth, which is this Monday, and then we may have a special meeting to vote on the updated policy on August twenty-eighth. So we will have that on the website when it has been confirmed. Okay? As a reminder, all board members were provided with the structure, materials, and information ahead of tonight's meeting, both by the district and the board president's weekly updates to help prepare us for the discussions. The board president and board clerk have shared written public comments received with the entire board, specifically four that were sent via Let's Talk and by email, three addressing the cellphone policy and one concerning the screening security system. While it's not customary or required due to the nature of the topics, the documents have been attached so that people have an opportunity to review it. And I just want to remind the board about our work agreements. We are to maintain a focus on what's best for all of our students, and you'll notice that you have a card. Thank you, Board Clerk Michelle. You have a card, just a reminder of what our work agreements are for today. One mic, one voice. We are going to be having a passionate conversation, so I just want to remind the board that we do want to hear everyone's voice, so one person at a time. Okay? Ensuring a safe space for views to be expressed, treating each other and staff respectfully, more specifically showing kindness, courtesy, and politeness, making a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening and considering with an open mind, while others are allowed to express their viewpoints, even if one disagrees. I do, and I'm going to say this a little later, but when we talk about the security screening system, we're not voting on anything today. We're not making a decision. We are anticipating that we will have continuous conversations even into September. So this is a conversation so that the public understands where we fall, what are we thinking, but there's no decision that's going to be made, because we understand that this is a sensitive, sensitive topic, and that we have to be very deliberate and intentional in thinking about everything before we move forward with any decision. So I just want to re, and you'll hear me say that again, we're not making decisions. This is an opportunity for us to have an open conversation. Okay? And again, as we move forward with our discussion tonight, I want to emphasize that it's important for every board member to have the opportunity to ask questions. Again, it's going to be, I anticipate, a very passionate conversation, which is good, but I want to make sure that everyone's voice is being heard. Even if we don't agree, it's important for everyone's voice to be heard. Okay? This ensures that our deliberations are thorough and inclusive. And I want to say that again, because we fight, we advocate for inclusivity, so we want it to be very inclusive in this conversation. I encourage each of you to contribute and ask that, and I ask that we remain mindful of everyone and to give everyone a chance to speak. This will be a free-flowing conversation, just like yesterday, so, but if it kind of gets off the rails, then I will go back to the three-question protocol. Are we okay? We're okay? Okay, awesome. Okay? So thank you again, everyone. So now we will entertain conversations about the cellphone policy. Yeah, we are going to.
Get to close.
Oh, to close? Okay, okay. Yeah, sure. Board Member Vivian?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I took a lot of time thinking about a conversation last night. It was a very heavy conversation. It's a very crucial conversation for us to have.
Right.
And I felt, and a lot to my feeling, like there were a couple of questions that we failed to really dive into last night, so I just wanted to kind of bring it out to the light for the public to kind of, to kind of gauge where I'm coming from. We didn't really discuss why, the minutia of why cellphones in the classroom is an issue. We didn't really get into why our students, our children are addicted, and the impact that it has on their ability to perform, focus, function, their overall mental health. So we know that cellphones are addictive, but we really didn't dive into the why. The why is the dopamine addiction. So we've heard the term, but do we really understand what that means and what that looks like for our children in the classroom? And that's not, that's something that we didn't really dive into. What many may not know is that social media, the algorithms used to build social media sites is, was modeled after the same algorithms used to get you hooked to a slot machine. Is that there's a methodology, a purposeful methodology, to keep you repeating the same behavior over and over and over again. And that methodology is called random intermittent reward. So what happens is when you're scrolling and scroll, you dive into, you fall into a scroll hole on social media, you pass by several things that are innocuous, but then bam, you're hit with a riot, a fight, something illicit, somebody base jumping off of a rooftop. So now what you're, what happens is that reward system that's in your brain, that gets hijacked with excessive dopamine levels, and your brain becomes addicted to that dopamine. So this is what happens, is you now become paralyzed in that same action over and over and over again. This is why our students couldn't, they couldn't put their phones down even if they wanted to. They are, they're chemically addicted to what that phone is providing for them. What we also know, or may not know, and I found that there are over fifty psychological studies in this country over the last ten years that have determined that there is a direct link between excessive dopamine, the dopamine addiction, and increased agitation, behavioral changes, impulse control issues, depression, anxiety. So when we look at this and we, I really want to, want to encourage everyone to factor in this information when we're making this decision. So essentially, our students have a drug hit in their back pocket, and they whip it out every time they want to hit, they want to fix, but we still expect for them to perform accordingly in class. We still expect for them to behave accordingly. They can't. They can't. That ability to differentiate between reality and non-reality, they didn't grow up having that. So my, I wonder, is what would the potential positive impact be on overall classroom behavior if we were to completely remove a primary source of stress and anxiety and agitation in their back pocket during the school hours? Second point for me, and I will close, is we spoke a lot about mental health and the need for increased access to mental health for our children. This is huge. The need for mental health services was always there, I believe, but the response to COVID really shone a light on it and exacerbated the issue because we forced our children into isolation. And that's not natural, and it's a form of torture. Right? It's not normal to be isolated and stuck behind a screen. So now we see this explosion in the need for mental health services. For me, if we're going to decry the need for continued mental health services, we can't only be reactive to the issue. We should also be proactive. And part of us being proactive is looking at, listen, we have plenty of tools at our disposal to clean up the milk once it's been spilt, but we don't want to do a better job in securing the milk in the first place. So for me, and this is just where I stand, when we look at the data, we look at the current detriment to our children's overall mental health, we look at thoughts of self-harm, thoughts of suicide, the increased depression, the constant stress. I would be shocked in ten years to see how many of our children in this generation, in ten years, how many of them are going to end up being diagnosed with complex PTSD, because they're in a constant environment and mental state of agitation and stress, and that destroys the brain, and it's unfair for our children. This is not about us putting a whole lot of pressure on our children to improve their behavior. This is about us putting pressure on us as adults to be the adults in this situation and set a hard line for our children, because they need it. That's my Ted Talk.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Thank you.
The board quit, Mark.
Yes, you can come on.
I do want to address, I mean, you asked one question, then you answered it, which is, this is, this is, so I do, I do sometimes hear like, oh, there were beepers. Oh, there were cellphones, which we now refer to as dumb phones, that didn't have what these currently have. These are not the same devices, and you've completely illustrated where, especially NICE, the New York State Union is coming from on their push for this. We do see these as addictive devices, whereas we did not see these other things as addictive devices. Right? You nailed that. You answered the question you asked yourself. The second part was you asked, people have seen this work. Skogary did it. Classrooms changed. Kids talked to each other. I really want, there's one person I want to highlight, and that is the President of Bethlehem, Dave Rounds, because Dave Rounds is much more like me, a little bit more like, God, are we going to make another rule? Are we really going to like, you know, you know, do we really need all these, like, Dave Rounds will tell you, and there's a video, if you want, I'll get it for you, of the Nicetake made of Dave Rounds at Bethlehem being like, "I was wrong. This was great." Our classrooms completely changed. They went back to classrooms we saw years ago. Students were more interactive with each other. And then you have in the comments that you have, like, it's not, it's not any different. I will admit, like, when Dave said it, I was a little bit like, Dave and I are usually on the same wavelength, and it actually, Dave's comments actually moved me more towards, yeah, we should do this. Because I'm like, oh, if that's really what happened, then maybe I'm wrong too, and we really do need to put something in place, so.
I think I would liken that to, this is me being facetious, but I like to make illustrations to prove a point. If we have a grown adult who was a known coke addict, how stupid would we be to tell them, "You can keep the eight ball in your back pocket as long as we don't see it"?
Right.
We call those Vivianisms.
No, 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 no. Listen, I do the same thing, so don't like, I, I'm always like, this is extremely hyperbolic, but, you know, I thought about that. I thought about the same thing. They are, our students are addicted. My daughter is addicted. I feel like I screwed up a little bit. Like, I do, like, I, you know, like, I think about it now, and I don't think we really knew what we were doing. Right? And again, and I think you nailed the, nailed it. It's, I do want to say this, and this is stuff I thought about last night. It's not really the device, it's what's on the device. And even text messaging, while not a corporation creating something to get you to keep rolling the dice, getting a text message has that same effect. "I wonder if that's the girl." "No, it's my idiot friend." "Well, maybe that's the girl." "No." You know, like, you are looking for that one text message that you're hoping to get. So every time it buzzes, you're like, is this good? Like, it really is. They really, like, I do want to, I do want to stress, and I want to stress something else, too. Teachers are great. You know, I send teachers, I defend teachers. We cannot overcome this. And district by district is saying, and hearing from their teachers, and saying, "We understand you need support from us." It can't just be like, "You guys just got to get better," and that'll fix the problem, because I don't see that happening. So.
Thank you. Board Member Amanda?
One of the questions that maybe for tonight is just, and I wonder, is with all of this conversation that we're having, regardless of the decision that we make, like, my main hangup is how do we know it's going to be enforced? You know, this potentially could cause a lot of, what's the word, like, controversy between parents and students and teachers. There's going to be a lot of pushback, even if it's not by like the masses, the, those who are like adamant that this is not a good thing to, to remove cellphones from the school district. You know, we need to, I just want to be sure that whatever we decide to do, it's going to be enforced, because Bernie's, in your opening statement, you said it, this policy, the policy that we have is already pretty strict. Kids are not supposed to have their phones at all, except for maybe during lunchtime. So I'm just hesitant to say like, okay, let's either revisit this or, you know, make it maybe a little bit more strict and say no phones at all during the day for anyone, if it's not going to be enforced. And this is like totally aside from my opinion on the issue, like one way or the other. It's totally pointless for us to have this conversation, as good as it is, if it's not going to be enforced one way or the other. So how do we know, how do I know that whatever we're taking, whatever the agreement is, when the time comes, it's going to happen?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think one of the things, and I'm going to give him credit because he mentioned it yesterday, but then when I was looking at the research, it was stating, they stated several things, and one of the things is to check in and see how any policy is working. So we already have a date, actually, November sixth or November twentieth, whatever we decide, even if it stays the same, is revised or updated, we are going to revisit it November sixth or twentieth, and we will have an update about the implementation. And that's when we decide we're going to continue in the same route, or we're going to do, have a detour. But yes, okay, I hope that helps.
Yeah, I didn't know if someone had, like, did have an answer tonight saying like, no, we already, we got it covered, you know, or if it's like a work in progress, we're still figuring it out.
Yeah, I think on our end is accountability. So we are going to, and we, and we've had the conversation, Superintendent Cotto and myself, but we are going to ensure that, as, as the board, what we can do is ask those questions and make sure that we put it on the agenda, that we can make sure that whatever we decide is being implemented, but we also need the evidence. Right? So again, for sure, in November, that's September, October, November, and it's going to be three months, but then we can revisit it. After November, we can revisit it another three months, or if we feel even sooner, we can do that as a board. Okay? You're welcome. Board Member Jamaica?
Not to be too nitpicky, but I suppose sometimes I am. I think it's important for us to be intentional about language, and enforcement comes with some connotations, and it's something, again, that was discussed at the NISBA conference about how we talk about processes inside our school district and what environment it leads. We are talking about the implementation of the practices and procedures, and that includes what resources will be used if there is a student that doesn't want to give up their cellphone or they're using it now, not when they're supposed to, and what interventions we use to support our students in making the right choice and being attentive. And I think how we talk about this is as important as what happens afterwards. Vivian, I agree with you that we always need to be mindful of the things that impact the, the mental health of our children and our staff. I would love to have the links to that research that you found to, to see where it was stated, because we often throw out things and, and say it as if it is a known fact, but, but is it? Right? So is there medical data that says this is an addiction and this is where it lands? It very well may be. I don't know that. I've not seen it. So I very much welcome the opportunity to see that. If it is highlighted and determined medically as an addiction, we need to be mindful of that for multiple reasons. If you withdraw from the mobile network and it's an addiction, where are they going to see increased anger, tension, depression, irritability, and restlessness? What is the support system for ensuring that our students, if this is what happens, if we say beyond just the policy we have now that says you can have it at lunch and current policy says, when this teacher deems appropriate within the classroom? Right? Which I still stand by giving the ability for teachers to utilize that technology. We have to be mindful. I don't believe that right now we have enough support staff, whether it's guidance counselors, social workers, restorative justice practitioners, to put a ban in place and tell our kids, "Y'all ain't having your cellphones," and then deal with that for what will happen. I also worry about how it's going to impact attendance. We already have an attendance issue. Giving kids one more reason that, hey, I can't have this device, that for whatever reason, whether it's addiction, or safety, or you need to be connected to your family, or you have a job, because a number of our kids have jobs. They have other responsibilities that require them, require them to be able to have that connection, because we talked about the response time of a parent calling a school to get a message to somebody, or even the reverse, something happening in school with a child, and then how long before the parent gets that information? So while we're trying to navigate all of these different pieces, let's look at the full scope. If we're worried about their mental health, then we have to be worried on both sides of that fence. What is the impact on the mind of the child if they can't put it down? And how do we support them to learn to have that type of discipline and responsibility? And then if we take it away from them and implement it in a way that is consistent, that they're going to be without it for possibly hours at a time, what are we going to put in place to support the backlash of that as well? One piece of research or, or information that, that does exist is that in two thousand and twenty-three, the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization had recommended that schools proceed with caution, consider the role of new technologies in learning, and base their policies on sound evidence. The UN agency also suggested that exposure to digital tools like cellphones could help students develop a critical lens. could help students develop a critical lens on emerging technologies. And I quote, "Students need to learn the risks and opportunities that come with technology, develop critical skills, and understand to live with and without technology." Shielding students from new and innovative technology can put them at a disadvantage. And I'll, I'll share the, the link for this from the, the UN Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. We do have that balancing act. And I'll continue to stress it. There's an opportunity for teachers to use a tool to engage our students. It's already in their pockets, it's already in their hands. So they could be using it as an educational tool while also teaching them responsibility and self-discipline. Our current policy, because I'm gonna bring it back to that, that's the piece we have full control over, I would like to see added something about education, just like we have in the vaping policy. Let's ensure that we're offering some type of educational opportunity about being responsible, about being critical thinkers, about how to use your phone and to be able to be without it. And why? The why. Dennis said it yesterday. You can't just tell the kid, you can, and often we do, it's problematic. You say to the kid, just give me your phone. Because it's distracting you from school. A deeper conversation, we have brilliant minds in our districts. Every single one of our kids. Whatever path goes forward with the policy and the implementation, we need to ensure that there's an educational piece around the good, the bad, the ugly, why this is happening, how it's happening. And Bernice, you've said it before. We have to be able to communicate that with our families and our community as well. Because 13 years of a policy, and our teachers didn't even know it existed, or the full language of it. So those are just some of the thoughts that I have as we're moving forward and trying to figure out the best course of action for either changing, adjusting the policy, and then supporting our team in that implementation.
Thank you. Jamaica, I will be more than happy to send you links to all of the research that I have done. It kind of sounded like there was a hint that it might be spreading misinformation, but I digress. As far as encouraging further engagement in the classroom, our teachers have expressed that their hands are tied. So if they continue to have their phones and they're not focusing, and they're not paying attention, but we're telling the teachers to do a better job and engage in the students, we're essentially telling our teachers, you still have to continue to make bricks, but we're not going to give you the straw that you need to make those bricks. So at some point, I think that we need to acknowledge the fact that the skill has already been tipped. There is no balance. Skill's been tipped, and we're here now. So, again, I'll be more than happy to send you the information that I have obtained in my research. And I'm looking forward to our conversation on Monday at the Policy Committee meeting.
For clarification, I, I've been, no means ever try to say give teachers one more thing and don't give them the support to do it. So when I mentioned that there is an opportunity for teachers to use cell phones as a tool to engage students, I would be very clear, that is, that the responsibility of team leadership to ensure that they have the support necessary to do so. That we look for every opportunity to support teachers, as I have been advocating for for more than 20 years, in the work that they do to help educate our children. Looking for opportunities that they can share in that space with a technological device that many of us, if not all of us, use. As the United Nations pointed out, let's not deny the technology that our students are going to need if we can find a way to positively engage inside that environment in our classrooms while supporting our teachers. Just so that I'm clear.
Okay, well, I appreciate the clarification. I do not want us to be automatons and depending on only one source when making this decision. And I would love to know what our teachers need our children to have access to cell phones that they cannot already do with the district-issue Chromebooks.
And I'm gonna pause right now. I mean, it's a good conversation, I think it should continue with the Policy Committee. And I'm just going to have, Board Member Amanda, but thank you, Board Member Vivian, and a thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Board Member Amanda?
I just was curious real quick to see how easy, because I, I know internet searches, a lot of times, are all about how you search and the words that you search. So I just, like, real quickly did, like, smartphone, smartphone addiction, and a government website came up, and it lists specifically mental health, and even other things that we didn't even talk about with physical health, musculoskeletal problems, which is funny, because in my physical therapy office, and the like, screen that rotates, it always says, you need to hold your phones up like this, because if you hold your phones down like this, and now you have cervical spine issues. But sleep quality and sedentary lifestyle, like accidents, we know you're not supposed to text and drive, and, and also neurological problems. So, I mean, I know we're not gonna get into all those things now, but, I mean, the information is definitely, like, readily out there. And I do think the fact that we have the Chromebooks in the classrooms, it makes it harder to justify have, like, letting the kids use their cell phones. Not to say that there can't be a lesson, but engage, with engagement, a lot of times, you know, kids, it could be a class they love. Like, they absolutely, the teacher's amazing, they, they have a great relationship with the teacher, but it's that addiction to what's on the phone. And I was talking to a real estate attorney today, actually, about the death scrolls. You know, the, the disassociating, and you just end up scrolling for not even knowing what time it is. So it is truly an addiction. The information is definitely out there, I mean, I can send this out, I didn't, like, read the whole thing, I was just, like, skipping it real quick. But that, that was all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And I do want to remind the board that we were invited to the York State United Teachers Social Media Cell Phone Event. And I, and there I know that we will be hit with a lot of research. And also our governor, and I believe, but don't quote me on this, I can double check, but on the SED website, the State Education website, there is a lot of information about cell phones and how it impacts our students. So I'll take a look, because it's either on her page, the, the government page, or SED, State Education Department, but I will share that. But the event, and I'll put it in the updates, I had it in the updates since President Mike Silvestri has invited us, but it's in the updates. And please sign up, because I think a lot of our questions and a lot of what we're talking about might be answered as well in that session. Okay, so I am gonna pause, so what's gonna happen next with the policy? So as we mentioned, August 19th, the Policy Committee will meet. They will discuss, they will revise, or they will update, or they will keep it the same, or, you know, whatever the policy, again, thinking about everything that was said here. And then what will happen is that they will send us, the rest of the board, a draft. And we can kind of add our feedback and, you know, and our thoughts around it. And then the intention doesn't mean that it will happen, but the intention is that we will have that special meeting so we can vote on the policy, so that all administrators and staff know, at least with the cellphone policy, how they will proceed in September. Okay, we're good? Okay. Yes? So, um, I did mention this earlier, but I just wanted to say it while everyone's in the room. If you don't mind reviewing the policy as is, sending me anything, anything at all that you think should change, be different, be added, what have you, by Sunday evening before our Monday Policy Committee meeting, that would be very much appreciated. Because we want to make sure we have absolutely everything, I've taken as many notes as possible. But we really haven't spoken specifically to what exists currently. So if you could take a look at it and send that to me, that would be great. So our next topic.
We have a video.
And the video. That's the next topic, the Yonder video.
So I would share that, Mr. Green had shared some of his research and how he's been engaging with other districts. So we just want to share a Yonder video that kind of shares how they go about doing that in other districts.
Educators around the world are seeing the damaging effects of phones on student engagement, social development, and mental health. Cell phones, cell phones have been linked to many of the district's recent problems. Pieces of anxiety and depression.
Bullying, staging fights, and friendly fights.
In an effort to crack down on cellphone usage, the district piloted these magnetic locking backs called Yonder. It's an easy solution for a generation in the midst of a mental health crisis. Yonder is the established leader in creating phone-free schools. For over 10 years, our product and program has allowed students to experience the focus, creativity, and relief that comes from a phone-free school thing. As students center school, they place their phone in their assigned Yonder pouch. They close and secure their pouch, keeping it with them throughout the day. When leaving school, students tap their pouch on an unlocking. How's that wifi working? Across 26 countries, our school partners report having more teaching time in the classroom, improved student safety and wellness, better student engagement, student behavior, and academic performance. Creating phone-free schools is a community initiative. Our comprehensive program provides support to our school partners from start to finish with step-by-step guidance, parent communication materials, policy development, and proven expertise to ensure everyone understands the difference a phone-free education can make.
It's amazing to see kids come to school and not have to worry about that phone dilemma. Or them being bullied by someone else on social media.
It was kind of annoying at first, but then I saw like the difference between, like, my old school and this school. I see more people, like, interacting rather than being on their phones, like, especially at lunchtime and break time. They are way more engaged, everyone's happier.
It's night and day, I saw kids' faces again.
So this video's just showing another option, but you will, you are all also provided with Troy's. Policy is right on their website, so if you go to the second page, it says down at the bottom, student phone policy and guidelines, and it's the following pages. What I notice is that I, I have a feeling that Yonder helps the districts with the policy, because if you look at Skahery's, it looks very similar. So you have Skahery's, and now you have Troy's. As I find more, whether it's on Yonder or other policies around the phone, I will send them to all of you. Especially, I'm hoping, before Monday, because I know you all are going to have a policy meeting. Okay? One last question or comment, I have a stupid representative, Joyce.
Sorry. I just had a question and just comment on the Yonder pouches. How do we plan to actually enforce them? Because it does seem like a great idea, but in effort, this could just in turn just breed more either liars, or just, nah, lies is a really bad word.
We know, yeah, I mean, it's okay.
But if anything, rather than put my phone in a pouch, either, I'm either just not gonna come, not me, but students will either have the option of not coming to school, having their phone on them, and just constantly going to the bathroom, skipping classes, or choosing other options that lets them use their phone, or just, it's instead finding other alternatives to still do what they want. And it's not really helping the main goal or focus, is what I'm kind of thinking, because when I was watching, I was like, okay, this seems cool. But then it's like, okay, if I step back and I'm thinking, I just won't, students would just not put their phone in and use it during other times, or just if it's not even being enforced in classes where the pouch is on you, but if your teacher's not, if no one's gonna actually be like, okay, put your phone in it, or something like that, or if somebody sees it and they're not gonna see anything, then at the end of the day, it's still not gonna be, we're still gonna come back and have this cellphone issue.
Yeah, you bring up such a good point, because it's about implementation. But it's not just about implementation, it's the communication and then the expectations. And if that's not clearly stated, so that all students know, and not only students, all staff, then you're right, we could be right here in November, December, having the same conversation again. The tricky part, though, Joyce, is that we're not the implementers. We create the policy, and we leave it to all of them. But what we will do, and we will be intentional, is that we can make sure we have checkpoints throughout the year to make sure, is this really being implemented with fidelity? And what's the evidence? I don't want to say proof, but what's the evidence? But you bring up an awesome point. One more?
But also, with phone, let's say, a phone, it's also, phone addiction can be seen in, not even addiction, but seen in students, but also adults. How are we gonna teach kids to deal with something like that? Because at the end of the day, it's, okay, you're not gonna have phones in school. It could either be, maybe we're raising adults who will know how to better handle phones, or we're raising adults who then are just constantly addicted to their phones, because they went from being kids who are not, especially if we're gonna do it starting in elementary, who weren't really using it, and now it's adults who are just, like, constantly gonna want to be on it. Because especially with students I've spoken to, I've gotten two sides of it. It's, like, they're like, phone is a problem. Cell phones are a problem in school. And then there's the students who are just like, I don't really know how to be me without the phone, but also I just really don't know how, like, sometimes you just get stuck on it, and it's just like, if we just push it under the rug and constantly just, like, ignore the issue, or just try to put plates and bands, which, it could go either way. The ban could happen, but also it just could have the problem constantly just brewing under me and explode into a bigger problem that could just, oh, and, or.
So I would suggest, when we submit things to Nahalani, write down maybe some of your suggestions on how we can mitigate those things, how we can help alleviate and resolve. And that's for everyone. I mean, we'll send all the information to Nahalani, and then we'll see the draft, and then we'll see how we all feel about it. And again, we can input our feedback and share our feedback with Nahalani and the, and the Policy Committee. Okay, but thank you, thank you. So I am going to pause, and we're going to transition to school culture and climate. I do want to say, a positive school culture is crucial for fostering a supportive and conducive learning environment that promotes the academic, social, emotional development of students, establishing a clear and shared vision, implementing positive behavior support systems, cultivating relationships, which we heard a lot from Jeff yesterday, and communication, celebrating diversity and inclusion. Inclusion, investing in professional development and support for staff, and promoting student voice and engagement. That's why it was great that you were the one that spoke before I said this, Joyce. These strategies are essential for creating a positive school culture that encourages collaboration, respect, safety, and a sense of belonging among students, staff, and the wider school community. By implementing these strategies, we create a positive school culture and climate that enhances student achievement, well-being, and overall school success. But I also want to say that our surveys don't necessarily reflect this belief. So what do we do? We all understand the profound emotions and sentiments associated with security screening systems. They are strong and passionate, there are strong and passionate opinions on both sides of the debate. However, we must balance these emotional responses with the real and perceived safety concerns voiced by several stakeholders. As we discuss, as we discuss this, let's also keep the following in mind. How do we assure, reassure parents that their children are safe in our schools? And other considerations, we must remain open-minded, review research, and consider potential liabilities while striving to protect all students from external and internal threats. Consider the importance of preparing for potential questions from parents if all possibilities are not explored. Be mindful of the historical context of security systems in schools, particularly their impact on Black and Brown students and students of color in general. Strive to balance the need for effective school culture and climate measures with the goal of bettering, protecting, better protecting, educating, and supporting all students. We will now open the floor for further board discussions on school culture and climate, and address questions related to the topics introduced by District Director of School Climate and Safety Jeff Russo. Rupe, I know she was on the call yesterday from Thought Exchange, hi Rupe. And Phil and Jill from Evolve, so welcome again, thank you.
Thank you. Board President, Dr. Kono, thanks for having me back again, board members. I just wanna kind of bring us back to last night where we were at. We rushed through a lot of information, and I think that there is a lot of discussion to be had, but in our willingness to try and give up a couple things to get through it, I had asked the members that were joining us from Evolve to prepare something to kind of show some of the data behind it, which we didn't get to speak to, but I know that that's gonna be some of the questions that are, that are the wonders. So I would like to give them the opportunity to give their five to 10-minute presentation that was supposed to be last night.
Awesome, yeah, or more.
So I'm gonna ask Jill and Phil to come on back up again and take us through that.
Jill and Phil.
I really wish our names didn't rhyme. I'm loving it. Hey, Maxwell's loving it. Unusual circumstance, but thank you for having us back here tonight, and I look forward to more discussion on this. This is our mission at Evolve, really, to make the world a safer and more enjoyable place. And when we are looking at all these different types of venues, I think it's important that we see the word learn there. We want our students to be able to learn, and also we want our staff to be able to instruct again and to teach and focus on that. Many of the studies that we didn't share, but I'd be happy to get to you, are showing a rise in anxiety of teachers and educators and also school leaders, right, principals and the like, saying that they are concerned specifically about gun violence in school. And we know that we have a critical teaching shortage across the country, not that that's the only reason, but that is a great part of it. And so I can provide further research on that. But I really wanna say, we recognize that culture is important in schools, and I wanna talk through some of that. So the school protection paradox really is typically those places that are the most secure are the least welcoming. You know, we're thinking of a prison, we're thinking of a place that's very sterile environment, and we know that's not good for school. We know that's not what we want in our schools. And so we look at, you know, what could we do? Every student could walk in every day and receive a full body for us, right? That might, that would be, we'd be more likely to find weapons on that student, likely, but it would be incredibly difficult and uncomfortable, and it would not be a good experience. And in the reverse, we can do nothing and then sacrifice that level of safety and security. What we are trying to do is find that sweet spot there in the top right quadrant, which is a high level of safety and security along with a positive learning experience for students. And that's at the forefront of every conversation that I wanna have with all the good people. So that safety balance in schools, you know, it's not just a feel-good thing. Positive culture and climate is important and does actually impact security. And there are plenty of studies on that, I have one here, that it does feel good in school, when it does feel good, you are less likely to have violent incidents in your schools. I think we know that intuitively, but there are studies to support that. And additionally, having that better school climate and environment is facilitating those feelings of belongingness, helps students to promote learning, right? The other balance I wanna talk about though, that I think in particular in dealing with your team and Mr. Russo, having our perceptions of safety in balance with the reality of safety. So really, I've heard people say, we're only as safe as we feel, right? So I love that you already performed a security assessment, there's already been some third-party that's come in and said, how objectively safe is the district? And it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of really awesome things. I think it's important to be very honest about the safety and security and looking at the numbers and the number of incidents and data points to actually say, how safe is it, and how do people feel, and what is that balance? What is the perception versus the reality of safety? So I just wanted to mention that. You can go into some communities where they're doing very little, they're not following even the best practices of locking their doors, for example, but they feel incredibly safe, they have this inflated sense of safety that it could never happen here, extreme denial, right? And that's a very difficult district for us to go into and try and discuss this because they're off-kilter. So I'm thrilled and excited to engage in crucial conversations because there seems to be a very honest and transparent nature here in this district to say, we are doing all these wonderful things, is there anything we can do to improve it? And we're looking at people's perceptions in a way that is data-driven. So I really appreciate that and wanted to call that out. We know about metal detectors, you know, I think we've seen plenty of research on metal detection. It is a 100-year-old technology that there are no shortage of studies about and how it impacts students, particularly students of color. And I'm familiar with that research, and we know that that doesn't feel good necessarily to walk through them every day. We're familiar with that on our team and our education team, and that's something that we're always thinking about when we're looking at our system and what can we do differently that makes it a different experience? I don't know if you wanted to add that?
Yeah, so just to kind of double down on that a little bit, so we're talking about screening, security screening devices. I know everyone immediately jumps to kind of standard walkthrough metal detectors that we're all familiar with, the gray boxes. Evolve is a different product, right? Although we are looking for metallic items, the way that our system is designed to be operated is to take away from some of the problems that you see with traditional screening methods, right? There's a reason that not a lot of schools use traditional metal detectors. That's because they're slow, they're invasive, it's just not an overall good experience like Jill were talking about. There are certain features, specific features on the Evolve system, not only on the system itself, but also how we are, how we function as a company and as a mission partner. If you go onto a standard metal detector company's website, they're not gonna have that mission statement on there like Evolve does. We take that very seriously. We have an ongoing relationship with all of our customers and users, and that's because we want it to be different. We want to allow you to screen for those items that should not be in school, but we do not wanna introduce any of these very big problems that come along with traditional methods.
And so I know that the font is a little tiny there, but when we're looking at threat detection, we're looking at consistency and efficiency, and I think that that is a big difference, right? Maybe from what each of us have even experienced, and I'm talking about myself, walking through an airport, for example, you know, just, I know what happens a lot, and it could be with any product, I agree, and when it comes to implementation, it could be with our product as well, but what can happen is you're only as strong as the operator. And what I've seen and experienced myself is, there's a long line of students trying to get into the building, and that security operator is in a very high-pressure situation to give butts in seats and to get kids an instruction, and they're saying eventually, honey, the bell's rung, like, I know you, I know you, it's probably your belt, it's probably your shoes, it's probably something else, they're, they're looking at the threat landscape and saying, I know this student, or I'm familiar with this student, and I think that he or she can come into the building and likely does not have a weapon. And so they're weighing the pros and cons at balance of getting them into school safely, and that experience we talked about. And so a lot of times, that individual is almost forced to say, come on, come on, just walk on through. And then what ends up happening, that creeping in of biases, you stop, you look differently than me, or I've perceived you as unsafe for some reason with my own internal set of biases, and that student gets stopped. And I've seen that, and I've experienced that as an adult, and that's just, that's the bias that we're talking about typically when it comes to metal detection or threat detection. And we wanna strive against that. One of the ways that our system is different than anything else is this image-aided alert on the right there. So what you're seeing is the system is taking, capturing an image, that is FIPPA-compliant, by the way, and Cloud Store in the cloud, that only your district would have access to, just to be clear for parents. And that threat box is going to be around whatever looked threatening to the system. The system is not registering faces, people, creed. What it is looking at is shapes and pieces of high-impact weapons. We're talking firearms, explosive devices, and larger tactical knives. Those kind of instruments that can do a large amount of damage in a short amount of time. And we do have some everyday items that the system will mistake for, or err on the side of caution and say, this, I can't tell for certain if this is threatening or not, and I wanna, I wanna, you know, alert on it and have the security operator take a deeper look. And we can talk more about that if you're interested. But what we're hearing and what our goal is to, is to balance that safety with that welcoming experience like we talked about in the beginning. We want to reliably detect weapons. We want to ignore most harmless items, that's the goal, right, for all of us. We wanna provide that visible deterrent. I wanna make you aware of a school district in Florida, I was thrilled, actually, I was on campus in Boston with Evolve, and got a phone call that a student saw the system, that school did intermittent screening, they didn't do it every day, saw the system and refused to go through it, and actually had a loaded, a loaded weapon on them and a plan. And so there is a deterrent value as well. I think detection is probably most important, but there is also that deterrent value. We talked a little bit about other prohibited items that are less likely to come in the building, just because the students will be going through a screening process of any kind, so we've seen that as well. But that's a little more anecdotal, and it's difficult to evidence that, though I do have on the last slide some evidence from one district that allowed us to share. And we don't want school to feel sterile, we don't want it to feel like a prison. We want students to have this dignity as they're going through the building. I know one of our principals, actually my principal in Oxford, had said, that was one of her favorite times of the day, was when the kids were coming in in the morning. She said, I'm usually in IEP, or I'm at a meeting, or I'm doing something, but this system forces me, for good or for bad, to be at that doorway every morning and to make connections with kids. And she said it's her best part of her day, welcoming them in every morning. I think that if you are not using this process and procedure in a way to make meaningful connections with young people, you're missing an opportunity at that front door. It shouldn't only be about weapons detection in our schools. And I think that's an important piece of this when it comes to culture. How are you screening? What does that look like? And I think that that's something, you know, we can share best practices in other districts, other policies and procedures that we've seen that are working for different schools across the country. We don't want students to have to wait in a long line. We don't want a soft target of students outside of the building waiting to get inside. That's not very safe either, right? So we're balancing that timeliness of throughput, how quickly can we get them safely inside the building? And then the bias, we've talked about a lot. Now, what we didn't talk about much is that box, that detection box, what that allows for is, students bring a ton of stuff into school, I know Phil said that yesterday, right? Multiple bags typically, personal belongings, and we are trying to limit the invasion of their privacy. So that box is gonna go around what looked threatening to them. That means that in that secondary search, we are only having to look there, where there's a box. We are not having to look at all of your belongings, we're not going on a fishing expedition and wandering and trying to figure out where the problem is. It has been isolated to one small area to search, which allows for a quick search, a search with greater integrity, and a much less invasive process. And that's important to us as well. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, I'm sorry.
You're good, keep going.
Okay. And just over the past 12 months, here are a few data points. 200 million individuals at schools having been screened in the last year, about 625,000 students daily, we're in over 1,000 schools, I think I mentioned that yesterday evening, and about 7,500 guns and knives found. And this is the district, I maintain their anonymity because this is not finalized data on their state website yet for the 23-24 school year, but they did give me special permission to share this. The district themselves estimated that between 21-22 school year and 22-23 school year, that they actually gained back approximately 35,000 instructional hours with students due to fewer prohibited items and discipline related to those prohibited items in school that year. And I know, again, it's small, but I think you have copies there to see, you know, 29 weapons the first year before implementation, and then after implementing down to six. Why, why is that important? That deterrent value again, if I know that they're gonna be screening in school, I'm less likely to bring it every day. And then what does that six mean? That six means they are using the system to find weapons also, that detection value as well. Do you have anything to add, Phil?
Can you go back to the slide? So I just wanna kind of point out again the differences in how our system functions, how we train our customers to use the system. Everyone's been to the airport and it's stressful, and you have some person with a weird tie on, and their hand in their face telling you to wait, wait till the person in front of you goes through the gray box, they're staring at a red light on top of the system, and then they wave at you, they never make eye contact, and then they said, give the hand up to the next person. That's something we definitely wanted to take away in using our system. So the reason that that tablet comes into play, there's two big reasons. Jill touched on it first. If a student comes in and you just have a red light, green light type of system, students have gym bags, duffel bags, lunch bags, backpacks, all that. If you just get a red light, you're searching three, four bags plus the student themselves, right? We wanted to take out some of that time-consuming searches, first of all, and that invasive feeling that you're gonna get by someone digging through all of your belongings. So that red box on that picture is very valuable in a school setting. You're gonna know which bag you need to take a look in, you're gonna know where on the student that you need to focus. It's gonna let everything go much quicker, it's gonna give Jeff and his staff more tools at their disposal to do a better job, to not be rifling through three different bags and potentially miss something. They're gonna know where to focus their time, know where to focus their efforts, and get that student on their way back into the building quickly, right? The second part is, when you're operating the system, you don't need to stare at the top of that gray box and wait for that red light or green light. You have that tablet right in front of you that's gonna show you exactly the student that you need to pull aside and spend some time with, and that frees you up to make eye contact, say hello. I've seen that happen, right? Instead of telling everybody, wait for the person in front of you, you're saying, good morning, had a great game last night, things like that, right? So it does foster some connections early in the morning, first thing, gives you the opportunity to spot a kid that doesn't look like they're feeling right. Just a lot different than what we think of when we think of traditional security screening.
Well, thank you. So if I could, just a couple more things that I wanted to mention. Number one, the implementation, obviously if we did move forward in any way, shape, or form, similar to our IDs two years ago, Dennis told me he had to have IDs in the school. I said, okay, I got them IDs, I got all my safety staff, a bunch of scanners, and then we opened up the doors and we were letting about three kids in for a minute, and after about a half hour and 1,500 kids standing in the heatwave parking lot, the administrator said, just let them in, you know, and, but we found a way. We kept fumbling through, but we found a way. We had to find different scanners, things that moved faster. We found a way. So we have the ability to shift our systems and make our systems work for us. I think that, you know, when we think about, a lot of, a lot of what I see when I see negative on it is, is the time consumption and getting people in the building. I think that part of the new technology is, there isn't a time consumption, you know, there's not a lot of slowdown. And so I think if it's something that's good enough for Disney, for Six Flags, like those places are using these systems, and I think that it's to keep those lines moving, to make it so that it is kinda, it's not invasive. And, and you know, that is really the goal, is to not be invasive, not slow things down, get kids in the building, but at the end of the day, keep guns out of the building, you know, and weapons that can really hurt people. And that is the extra layer that we're hoping to add in this situation. That's the next layer that I, that I believe is necessary to kind of take us to the next step. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
And then I did have Rupe still on there. I don't know if she can hear us or not?
I don't think she can.
No? Okay. Okay. We didn't give her a lot of time last night, she flew through her slides, and I'd love to give her a little more time to break down the data.
Can we hear it? I've been communicating with her, it sounds, I guess it's muted?
On our side.
On our side.
Because it went super echo when he, I think when he unmuted.
Even out in the lobby, you can't hear anything. But nobody's out there, Tyrone's watching. He's on his lobby. Do any board, oh, did we get her? Oh, right, okay. Do we have any board members with questions? Board member Alexandra?
Just for clarity, so this device, more than one student can go through at a time, or is it still like?
I'd rather they answer because it's their system, so somebody can speak technically to the system.
It's really gonna be about implementation, or if they're, you know, they can go through, we say, at the pace of life, you know, you can be holding your loved one's hand, or walking through carrying a child, for example, but sometimes just because the operator and the, when they're, you know, when you're doing that secondary search, you may choose to go at a time, maybe until you get more used to the processes and procedures, because the students will go so quickly that you may have a line of students who are being searched. So it just, you know, technically, yes, they can go through it at the pace of life, two, three at a time is fine without breaking stride. But you may choose not to do that, especially initially, just for your own implementation and procedures.
And I think that the way the ID system went with, and Dennis could speak to it, we do slow them down, we have three people across scanning IDs as they come in the door in the morning time, so they are, they are slow to a pace of scanning the ID, which we would still continue to do, to account for who's in the building.
So I know we're saying, you know, this is less invasive, but it still feels metal detector-ish to me. Is this model the only option? Is there something that can maybe be integrated into the door, the frame doors, or something that's more discreet if we were to go this route? Is this the only?
There certainly are technologies out there that you can do that, you can integrate it into the walls. I don't know if Evolve has that setup yet or not. I have spoken to representatives from many companies, there are, there are others out there. And so there's a lot of different technologies, and I think that, you know, we would have to find what's right for us. And so it's, it's an exhaustive search, and definitely, we are taking our time in making this decision, and there's no perfect system for anywhere, we're doing a lot of construction. We have buildings that don't have secure vestibules right now. So, you know, if I go to Central Park, where would I put it? You know, top of the stairs, bottom of the stairs, I don't even know where I would put it. So, you know, I think we had our threat assessment go through, they've identified things that we can do in our capital projects to make our vestibules more secure, and they do factor in, what if you added a technology like this? And I'm not sure if you're familiar with the pillars and what they look like, as you referenced, you know, the old gray box is not what it is, it's more like Macy's when you walk through the, you know, the two-screen machines, but there are some companies out there that do build them into the walls.
And my last question is, what is the maintenance on this device? So what would be the fiscal responsibility to the district to maintain?
So I believe, and I, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a four-year contract that we have with them, it's like a lease, and so while they're under a lease, the maintenance would be?
Yes, so our standard contract would be a four-year agreement. And that would include everything from warranty, service support, tech support, and break, fix, if it's any kind of manufacturer throughout that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandria, Board Member Vivian, and then Board Member Amanda, and then Board Member Jamaica, and then Student Representative Joyce. And somewhere there, I have some questions too. So Board Member Vivian?
I have two questions. So I heard that a few years ago in Albany, Albany PD, in conjunction with Homeland Security, actually went around to their schools within their district and performed a threat assessment at the school district. I don't know if they had to pay for that, but also offered situation awareness training for faculty in the schools. Have we considered something similar for our own district?
Yes, we did it last year. We offered what we, what is, what we use is called CRAZE training, Citizens Response to an Act of Shooter Event. It's out of Texas State University. And we had our CEOs go to each building, faculty meeting in the first half of the year. And they gave the one-hour training, which is all about situational awareness and standard response protocols.
Is that adequate enough of training when you're talking about people who aren't in law enforcement? So they don't have that extensive knowledge and it's not situational awareness is not second nature to them? So one-hour training, is that enough?
In my mind, safety training is never enough. And I think that we could train over and over. We should offer that training every year. I'm working on ways to build it into the menu that's offered at the start of the year for teachers. Some of it has to do with contracts and the ability to get in front of people for enough hours for all the trains that are needed. You know, we compete with safety, with teaching and learning, with all these different divisions. I think right now there's eight hours of state mandated training and only three hours allotted to do it in some of the contracts. So like, you know, we play this balancing game, but I can tell you, state that is very clear. There has to be a safety portion prior to the year starting with all faculty, with all students. How you do that is up to you. You know, we do it with faculty meetings, with letters home, things like that. But certainly, it's something we're always trying to improve. And then as far as the situational awareness, you know, your initial question with the CRAZE training, I a hundred percent, I was a certified CRAZE trainer at one time. That's why I felt strongly to bring it here to the staff. And I think that I would like to see that continue. And in the one hour, I think you'd be surprised at how much you gain. It's more aha, and it's more of, you know, boy, I never thought of that before. And it's really a strong trap. I would love to bring it to the board at some point, though, and give the training.
One last question. So we all know that handguns were found in our middle schools. So I believe there were two that were found. It's too, too many. And I think that we can all agree that the moment a loaded weapon enters a school building, everyone in that building is in imminent danger of being harmed. So my question to you, in your expertise, with the way that we have our buildings set up right now, with the security measures that we have in place right now, if we do nothing else, we don't implement weapons detection, we don't use metal detection, if God forbid a tragedy were to occur, would you be able to confidently look that parent in the face and say, I'm sorry this happened to your baby, but I know that we did everything we could as a district to prevent this from happening?
Me personally, no. That's why I'm recommending as the, your expert in safety in the position that I'm in, that would be the next layer that I would put in place. And I think it's for the fact that just based on litigation alone, what liability is there is for a district that has an issue like a loaded firearm in a school and takes no action to prevent that from happening again. God forbid a terrible event happens, you know, the litigation that would go with that would all be centered on the fact that you had this happen before and you didn't do anything. So, you know, I think there would be some argument to be made that we added some staff, but I think that the experts and like the armored one threat assessment that we had done, you know, we contracted for a third party to come in and do the threat assessment. When they came and did that threat assessment, it's one of the recommendations. And so we've been told by an expert beyond me that, you know, that is the current recommendation. So would I be able to look at a parent and tell them that I did everything I did? No, I wouldn't if we didn't take this action and add the next layer.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Vivian.
I just wanted to make sure I was on. All right. So after the four years, the initial four-year lease, is it just sort of like now we own it and it's on us? Or would we renew the lease or is that just like it could be?
So it's my understanding, and I can correct me if I'm wrong, it's a four-year lease. At that time, if you renewed the lease, you'd probably get the newer technology that's available. There are other companies that go on not a lease, but more of a rental, and they always update the technology, you know? So there's various contracts and various companies do it in different ways. So those would all be things that we would have to explore, you know, if it came to any Evolve situation. I believe it's a four-year lease. You don't own the machine at the end of the day.
Okay.
We can do it both ways, Jeff. Sorry.
If I'm wrong, excuse me.
We can do it both ways. So if you wanted to do it where it's basically a four-year subscription, as we call it, you can do it for four years. The annual fee includes the use of the equipment and then the warranty service and support and all that I mentioned earlier, as well as software updates. So we update the system three to four times per year. That gets pushed down automatically and updates just like your cell phone to kind of improve and make things a little better to operate. We can do it that way. Or we can do, you can purchase and own the equipment upfront, which a lot of schools opt to do if they have certain capital funds allocated for it or grant funds, something like that. And then after that, it would just be that service and support contract afterwards. So two different options for you, but we can lay that all out where you want to get there.
After the four years, does the technology continue to be updated or is that the end of your software upgrade?
After the four years, we'd have to go year by year additional.
To do software.
Correct.
So it would be an additional contract if you.
I wanted to add also, it's not only the hardware and software that we're talking about, we're talking about the entire team of wraparound services. So this is not like with some of our competitors where they drop it off and then leave. This is, we would bring an entire team of technicians, customer success manager, myself or some of the education team, Phil, to come and help with implementation for that first few days. Because like the IDs, there are usually some bumps and bruises for the first couple days of anything and you would want us here to help you with that. And so it's like a whole team approach. You have access to our team and all of those teams for the life of the agreement. So I just wanted to mention that as well. Thank you. And the other one is, we've got, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten that has been like against doing some types of weapon detection system, whether it's metal detectors or this Evolve system, is that it just doesn't really appear friendly. I know in the security meetings, we've talked about like wraps or something cool we can do to, you know, encourage school pride by putting a logo on it or something. Is that possible with these or was that something else? Okay.
Yeah, these can be wrapped. You know, you can have a student design contest and change it every month if you want it. So it's all just how much you want to pay to wrap the machine and, you know, because that's on you. I'm guessing they don't pay for the wraps.
I would also mention, some of our schools use that as ad space. So they use it in their stadium, for example. They sell it along with their boosters as another ad space for local businesses and help offset the cost.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Amanda, Student Representative Joyce, and then Board Member Jamaica.
Okay.
Hello.
How are you?
I just have a quick comment and then a question. So forty-six of our incidents, I believe this was just last year, forty-six of them were knives. And the system doesn't detect the small knives and medium knives. How do we? I still feel like we still face partly the same issue where we still have to go if a student is stabbed or, and knives or something like that, but.
No, it's a hard conversation to have. You're right. That's why we're having a conversation.
Joyce, you are fine.
We still have to face the issue that we're saying that we didn't stop that. Most of our incidents deal with knives. I'm going to repeat that. They deal with knives. The system does not detect that. Is there a better option or another option that does increase safety on that aspect? Or is this our aspect?
So the reason why we do layers, right, is because we're never going to stop everything. And I think that when it comes to knives, systems like Evolve, they're made for weapons of mass destruction. They could hurt a lot of people in a really short time, right? So it's made for firearms, it's made for pipe bombs, it's made for things that could injure a lot of people in a hurry. Knives, vapes, things like that, they can certainly turn up the sensitivity and catch things like that. But then when you look at the slide about the balance of how it looks and how friendly it is and user-friendly, you know, we'll be stopping everybody coming in the door that has a cell phone, you know? At the end of the day, we can adjust it and find everything, but really, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to, we're, one hundred percent honest here, we're trying to keep guns out of the school. And this is a technology that does that. Are the knives a problem? Certainly. But we really want to look at that on its own and say, okay, how did we come to find seventy-five knives, seventy-four knives? And a lot of times it was that relationship piece. And that's one of the layers. It's the relationships that cause people to say, hey, you know, I heard this, I heard that. And then we do a quick, you know, search or talk to somebody and that's how we find a knife. People didn't come forward and say, hey, I have a knife in school, you know? And so we found seventy-five by way of the systems we have right now, which is relationships. But when it comes to firearms, depending on relationships, the two that were found were found because of relationships with the student noticing behaviors that weren't right. But there were already firearms in the school, you know? And depending on that relationship is just a big risk to take when you have a way to kind of mitigate that risk. So you have a great question. It can detect knives, only you'd be searching everybody. So, you know, that's the balance. I don't want to have to have everybody get searched on their way in the door. You know, I want people to keep walking. I want them to not even know it's there. I want it to be a pretty decoration on the floor. And I think that what she alluded to in the past was that, or earlier, was that as students adapt to it and they know what items they shouldn't, shouldn't have, you know, the friendliness of the machine increases because you really don't even know it's there at that point. So that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And we are Joyce and Board Member Jamaica, and then it'll be Vice President Yohanna.
Questions for Evolve? Come on up, come on down, Price is Right. You mentioned the number of items that were found. Do you have data about how many bags were checked and nothing was found? And do you have a desegregated by race?
I do not know the answer to that, but I do know that I can give like an alert rate. So we're talking about the nuisance alarms and how many of those bags are alerting that do not have a weapon? Is that what we're?
That, so red square says check this, they check it and there wasn't a weapon. How many times was there not a weapon? And then within that number, what are the demographics of the students?
We have no way of registering those demographics because the system is not in any way capturing race, so.
But the people who are monitoring, right? Because it's, there are people monitoring that then are checking the students so they don't then put data in any place that says, we checked the bag and there was nothing there. There's no capture of that data.
Not by race, but certainly if they do not catch anything, we have the alert rate every day. So what we didn't talk a lot about is that the system, with its AI, it's actually a smart system. And so there's access to that data for the security operators. I didn't want to get too deeply because of the security information, but there are different sensitivity settings that we alluded to. You can actually know on the system what your current alert rate was, your nuisance alarm rate, because you are tagging actual weapons. So if I were to actually find a weapon, I'm going to tag that it is a weapon with the understanding that if I did not tag a weapon, it was not a weapon. So I can find the data of how many times or what percentage of students walked through the system and were alerted versus how many of those actually had a firearm or something threatening on them. So I do, I can't have that data.
Okay.
Not broadly across every one of them, but school by school, building by building, system by system. That being said, most of our schools, and I don't want to overpromise, but depending on their sensitivity setting, most of our schools are somewhere close to ten to fifteen percent alarm rate in most of our school settings. Meaning that eighty-five or so to ninety percent of students are typically not alerting when they walk through the system. That's once we're operating with fidelity and we've got some systems in place. But based on that sensitivity, you may intentionally use that data to search more students. And I want to give one example of that. So after our shooting, we had a ton of swatting incidents, a ton of copycats and a lot of threats that came into the school. And so what this allowed me to do as an administrator before, I would get a very nondescript threat or threatening call, like something bad is going to happen at the middle school tomorrow. But what does that mean? And I could either cancel school and keep kids from instruction with very little information. It's probably coming from another state or another country even that we were getting threats from. Or I can change my security posture. But this system allows you to do is you can say with integrity to your families and to your staff, in response to new information, in response to a change in our threat landscape, we're increasing the sensitivity today. We're going to intentionally search more bags and we can predict how many and percentage-wise based on that AI. But in any of our different environments, I would be able to tell you the alarm rate, the nuisance alarm rate, to your point, but not by race.
And that is something that's very school by school, building by building, not even district by district. So if that's something that we would guide you through, we've guided all of our customers through that at implementation, this is what the sensitivity settings do. This is how many alarms you're going to have, how many bag searches you're going to have to do on a daily basis. And then that's for you and your building administrator to decide where you want to fall. We guide you through that and we make sure that on whichever setting you decide is right for you, we train you through, teach you through how to get best practices to get that as low as possible. But that's a very, yeah, very case by case thing.
Okay. And then you mentioned your knowledge about research regarding metal detectors and the negative impact it has for a whole host of reasons. And Board Member Alexandria raised that concern as well. But the data isn't just exclusive to old-school metal detectors, right? It is metal detectors and other surveillance technology. And that there is a discriminatory practice that disproportionately harms students of color and that data supports, one study found, compared to white students, black and Latino students are four-point-eight and two-point-seven times respectively more likely to pass through some type of surveillance at their school. So how are we to feel that we are not simply perpetuating those same systems in a district that is majority students of color to which, again, the data talks about, schools with fifty percent or more students of color are over eighteen times more likely to use a combination of drastic security measures than schools with less than twenty percent students of color? If everyone in the country is worried, and rightly so, about gun violence, then why is it, one, that majority students of color are the ones that have extreme systems of safety? And, two, there is not any research that shows that any of these systems prevents violence? But there is research, including the information from our own threat assessment, that talks about how we are already doing the things that prevent violence from happening, including the two guns, which my understanding, one was right outside the school, the other was inside the school. I feel when you gave the presentation that showed the AI is detecting and building relationships, we already have that. The reason we were able to find the gun in Oneida was because of relationships. The reason that the gun outside of Mount Pleasant, I believe it was, was because of relationships, that they looked at the student and something didn't feel right, something didn't seem right. If we're doing that, that we have been moving with fidelity in that direction to ensure, based on data and research, even from the own threat assessment we received, why should we spend money on a system that we don't have research that supports, but does have research to support, support the negative psychological impact on students and families?
There are a lot of questions in there, so I'll say, I don't want to get out over my skis and overpromise anything. I'm talking about the technology. I think most of the research that you're sharing is talking about the implementation. And I can't guarantee that it won't be implemented in any one way or another in terms of searching certain types of students. That will be up to the staff in the building. I can only tell you that the technology itself is not creating a bias. But, the technology itself is giving more information to your operators than a legacy metal detector. Uh, more information about the location of that threat and the type of potential threat that it may be, and it is not registering race or anything else. That, that's as much as I can promise you. I can't tell you otherwise how it will go in terms of implementation. That's something to do with your culture. Um, and, and I don't, I'm not going to pretend to, to know how that's going to go here. I think to your point, what I was trying to say is that, that individual who's working that system, I don't want it to deteriorate, deteriorate those relationships. And I think that our system lends itself to maintaining and strengthening those relationships that to your point already exist in your buildings and, and, and should be applauded. Um, but I don't think that it's necessary to build relationships. I think that it supports the relationships that already exist.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, and then, I guess, for now, finally, Jeff, um, for three years, the, the US Department of Education and the US Secret Service, uh, conducted a joint study to better understand how to more effectively prevent violent acts from occurring with schools. They concluded that school climates, uh, the culture respect, cultivate, that cultivate respect, provide emotional support, pay attention to student academics, social and emotional needs, can reduce targeted violence. I would say that the US Department of Education and US Secret Service are, are highly accredited in what would be best in preventing violence. And, there's not support from what I've seen in adding these types of security systems, but there continues to be support for the work we have been doing. That has proven fully effective in preventing violence from happening. And to Joyce's point, we did find the knives because of those relationships. Like, the work that we've done over, I, how many years to increase social workers and guidance counselors and the, the SROs I didn't want, right? That turned out to be the most amazing asset to our district because of those relationships. Because it's not treated like a cop in our building, but they're treated like part of our community that builds relationships with our kids, that can look at someone and say, what's up with you today? Is there something in your bag that's a problem? And prevent that from happening. I want our, our schools to be safe for everyone. And that means doing the things that are research driven like we have and preventing us from, what you said, having a knee jerk reaction. We have to do something else because we know there was a gun, as opposed to highlighting we were able to prevent acts of violence because of the work we've already done. I can't ignore the negative impact that we're going to feel if we have some type of electronic device, whether it's wrapped or not. Our kids and families know what it's like to go through security systems to visit their loved ones in prison. How do we mitigate that? We say, oh, well, you're, other people feel safer. We don't have any research that says they are safer, but they feel safer and so it's okay that you feel worse. How many times are we going to do that in the face of the research we have? And I'm not really asking for an answer. I am sharing it because I want us to think deeply about it. Prevention is the way, and we've been doing that work. And our own assessment from a boatload of cops told us that the US Department of Homeland Security lists all of the ways that we're able to recognize a threat assessment. And none of those ways actually involve metal detectors or other weapons detection. I just want us to be real about it.
And I think in response, I just want to say, I agree. We're on the right path. We're adding a lot of great layers. Um, I think if we found seventy-five knives, I think there could have been hundreds. And I think that if we didn't find a gun in the high school, it doesn't mean there wasn't one in the high school last year. So, that's my fear. And, and I think that I, I, I agree with everything you're saying. I do. I think we're on the right path. I think building relationships. The, the second gun was in Mount Pleasant, the both were in the building.
Okay.
Um, but I think, my, my, my wonder is always going to be, you know, what if we didn't recognize the signs and what if we didn't see, um, something that came into the building before it was too late? You know, and, and that's kind of, that, that's why I am where I am right now. Because I think that, um, the reason that we brought in Roop and Thought Exchange was because we wanted to talk to all the stakeholders. We did want to hear from everybody. And I think that, um, you know, I'd love it if Roop could speak to that. I don't know, she can hear me, but I don't know if we could hear her.
She has some ear yourself?
Hi, I can hear you.
Well, I have, for Thought Exchange, it, it will be my final thought since you, you brought it up, um, because something that I was curious about, um, yesterday with the, the presentation of the questions that were given, who developed those questions? Um, and I asked that very sincerely as someone who worked with a research team out of CUNY in New York City to develop a, a survey about safety and was educated by that research team about how to ask questions, to do your best to not give leading questions, to eliminate as much bias as possible, it's never a hundred percent. But, who's creating the questions that we're asking of our stakeholders? Um, and, and then also, you know, hopefully, we're always going to have the, the demographics going forward. I, I know we ended up getting them, um, but hopefully that, that always happens. But, I, I do have questions about how.
To speak to that, I would definitely like to go to, um, Dr. Kodo or President Rivera because I know that Dr. De Vries was big into that. I am not the survey guy, so, um, Roop is here and, and...
And I do want to start, it was in the updates as well. So, what happened is that, um, it was a, a bunch of people. It was Vivian, Nahalani, myself, uh, Doc, uh, Superintendent Kodo, Dr. De Vries, and she really is the one that spearheaded the original one. And then we kind of dissected, dissected it, and who else was part of that?
I mean, Roop, there's also a platform that they have on Thought Exchange that provides the initial, but then we kind of just...
So, if you saw the original to what it ended up being, it was very different, even though we, we still had concerns over some of the questions. And I don't know if you all remember, when we, yeah, so it was a, it was a, but, a few, several of us.
And it's also, I think, assisted by AI where when you answer a certain way, it brings you down a different path on certain questions. So, um, you know, again, Roop is the expert in this area, so I, I would defer to, to what she has to say about that.
Yeah, I would say it was definitely a partnership. Uh, we take, um, well, me specifically, I work with me well specifically, so, we take examples from other districts and other partners of ours, reviews to ask for safety and security, provided those examples. And then I think this team, uh, there at your district put together this survey question with their combined expertise and also knowing your district a little bit better. Um, so, adding demographic questions, um, you know, those types of demographic questions that you saw there was a part of, you know, growing that security questionnaire to that you can really hone in on who's saying what in each of those stakeholder groups. Uh, as far as the AI piece or the direction, uh, we were very mindful about if someone answered a certain way, like on a Likers question, I strongly disagree or just, you know, strongly agree, um, to dive in a bit deeper, asking more questions as to why. We can do that further than what we've created in front of you, uh, or that we looked at yesterday. Um, there, we have, um, intel and we have, uh, pop, platforms within our tool that allows you to even dive deeper. Should be, you have to dig in any more of those, uh, demographics or questions that you did ask. You can be very mindful and very, um, you know, aware of what people are saying or how people could have answered questions. And you can actually dive in deeper in the same survey to ask why they feel that way, why is it valuable for them, why are they, why is it important to them? And then also, you know, asking for suggestions right then and there of how they feel that they could, you know, feel more safe or what, why they feel that security protection is the answer. Um, you can go even further, should we do follow-up surveys to that as well. If anyone's asked your questions, I'd happy to elaborate.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to continue with more other board questions, so we'll start with Alexandria, then it's Nahalani, Kathy, and then Amanda.
Jeff, my question is simple, and I'm sorry if I missed this in your presentation yesterday, but is the goal to implement these safety devices in all schools, K through twelve?
So, where we landed, um, talking about with District Safety Committee and my conversations with, with other board members or other, uh, members of the ELT, um, we're kind of landing with secondary, um, so grades six through twelve. So, it would be the three middle schools, um, the high school, and then next year the freshman leadership academy. Um, and Washington Urban is kind of a unknown at this point, um, but with Big Pick, uh, it might have been, we want to make sure that we don't do this in a way that is not equitable, right? So, if I'm going to do it at the high school, I got to do it at Big Pick and I got to think about the kids downtown and, and I want to make sure that, um, you know, again, we have to have the conversations about do staff go through it and, and what, what does this all mean? So, um, more conversations to be had, but the goal was six through twelve.
Thank you. And when you're implementing that, I'm sure, well, I'm not sure, but, um, maybe you would consider how we then navigate our fifth graders who haven't experienced these type of devices for the following year, something?
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. Something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandria, VP Nahalani.
Okay, so my question, uh, questions are for all three of you. Um, I'm going to start with, actually, Board Member Jamaica asked the first one as far as the percentage of false positives, right? That goes off, but, um, I was curious, I believe it's the second to last slide where it talks about the numbers, right? Two hundred million individuals at schools have been screened, six hundred and twenty-five students from Dali, um, seventy-five hundred confirmed, detected via insight. So, I was just curious, can you share with us, right, like, this is us having the conversation, we're doing the discussion, can you share with us how many schools currently use Evolve? And even maybe like the list of names of schools, just so that we can kind of...
Absolutely. And, and I, I would really encourage you to reach out to board members and other stakeholders in those districts that are using them, specifically with similar dynamics and, and demographics to yourselves and size. Um, I know in the state of New York, I'm not sure which ones we're allowed to, our customers let us reference them or not. I know Buffalo Schools is one we can reference. Um, so, we're in Buffalo Schools, we're in over a thousand schools across the country. So, we can give you a list of referenceable customers. I don't know if you have others, you want to share in New York?
Yeah, so, within New York State, Buffalo Public Schools has gone with Evolve Systems across all sixty-five of their buildings. Um, they operate about, I think, seventy-three Evolve Systems across those buildings and some of their football stadiums. Um, Niagara Falls City Schools has been a customer for a long time as well. They do it, um, they have, I believe, fifteen, sixteen of the Evolve Systems across multiple buildings. Um, Baldwinsville Central Schools in the Syracuse area is probably one of the more recent ones, uh, that has done K through twelve across the board for thirteen different buildings. Statewide in New York, and I, I can't publicly mention all their name by name, but probably about, I would say, upstate, uh, fifteen to sixteen districts. And then including, uh, the city, the metro area, we have a number of charter schools there as well.
Thank you. Um, so then my second question, I think goes back up to yesterday's presentation. I think you had mentioned that, um, this is Adbol through ROCEs, like, or perhaps...
One form of the passive AI is Adbol, those are, just became Adbol.
Ah, oh, okay, so not this?
Not this system though.
Gotcha.
We're working on it.
Okay. No, that's what I was curious about. And then the last question, um, really Jeff, to all of ELT, um, we do a lot of surveys, right? We do a lot of surveys, looking at the survey yesterday with the community safety survey, the one question, would you support the installation of security screening systems if they were, if there was a consensus among stakeholders, right? So, when we look at the, the breakdown, because I think that that is very important, like demographically, who we're, we're touching base with. In this particular question, we have five folks, it looks like, it's, it's a small sample, um, a little over twenty, maybe twenty-one, but five folks who say prefer not to answer, three African-American, and then, um, thirteen or eighty-six point seven percent, um, white population as it's broken down here, right? So, I guess my question is, is with our surveys, we know, first of all, I have survey fatigue, everybody, everywhere you go, everybody has some sort of CSAT, you know, please stay on the line, get an Amazon gift card, I, you know, whatever. So, our families are busy, they have lives, they've got children, we've got to feed them, we've got to, you know, work, we've got things going on. And I'm just curious, because I think years ago, I, I don't recall, um, and I mentioned this to Board President Rivera, like, there was, years ago, with intention, we went out into our communities. So, kind of like a listening survey, but definitely soliciting the input. Um, and again, this is why I'm saying it to you, but it's for all of ELT and the, the district. Um, Dr. Kodo, like, if we can be maybe more intentional, getting out to those populations where we're not seeing a large response? Because I'd love to get more feedback and I just, with three answers, when you look at the, the black African-American, um, demographic, one said yes, one said no, and one says I'm unsure it looks like? Or is that, am I misreading that?
I want to let, maybe, Roop, I don't know if you're looking at the same slide, uh, because I think if it's less than five percent, it doesn't give you anything.
Yeah, it says less than five, and then it says three all the way on the right, so I'm assuming it's three people? Is that correct?
Yeah, I, you're, you're reading it correctly. Um, one thing, um, I can say, I will say that, um, the team that I work with in the Lawyer District Office, I would say that's where Thought Exchange is coming in because survey fatigue is absolutely a thing. Um, so, I would say, and especially things like this, I think this is where our partnership with Thought Exchange, um, comes in too, to help, is because of the one platform, you can dive deeper at one instance and get to all the questions that you need to in one survey. And so, that's kind of, the district has been very intentional about how they do this moving forward, so I, I would give that insight on my end. Um, I will say that Dr. De Vries especially, um, and others, people in the, uh, district also come up with some creative ways to get to those, uh, demographics. I think we did this in the past, as well. So, just, um, if I can give some insight on that, I would say that that has come up and that is something that Thought Exchange is absolutely hopeful. Uh, but yeah, you're reading it correctly. If it's under five for the protection of anonymity, we would say less than five. So, we just, um, that's why it's reading that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Kathy.
Yes, with regard to the data that was presented on the chart, um, the one about the district's Evolve screening data, which I believe last night you said was in North Carolina's school district. Um, could you tell me approximately how large a school district that was?
Very, it's a mega district, it's, uh, in the top fifty largest...
Oh, it was a county, it was a county one, right?
No, no, it is one school district, but it's in the top one hundred largest schools.
It's Macomb, uh, Macomb, yeah, I saw it, I looked at it. So, it's out there.
I wasn't sure if it was public yet for others, yeah, okay.
Okay, the, the, my main question here is though, this chart shows that it's non-firearm weapons secondary schools. So, how were these weapons detected since it seemed as if your systems do primarily firearms?
They do primarily firearms, but we have caught tens of thousands of knives each year. So, we are, I did want to be very careful. We do catch many knives, uh, whether the system itself alerts on the knife, which depending on the make of the knife, the density of the metal, and some other different sensitivity settings and things like that would determine. It's also the fact that students are going through a screening process. And so, if you go from not searching any bags to searching bags, whether you, you know, whether it detected on something else, you're finding something.
So, could we see the data on the firearms?
I believe that firearm data is also...
It's the lower box to the right, on the same page.
Twenty-nine to six, so nine, okay, so that, those were each year. And, and what I was noting though is, I wasn't sure I saw any improvement from quarter one to quarter four on some of these things. It seemed as if we were turning up about the same number of incidents. In other words, there wasn't a working group associated with the fact that the implementation was, uh, being undertaken. So, um, uh, that's, that's more of a comment. And then I was going to ask also, and bet you filled it in on the, uh, school districts, uh, or was there, were there any school districts in New York using this? And so, those are my questions.
Thank you, Board Member.
And, and one idea, I just, I, I don't want to overstep, but we did talk about this and I know it's something that's been on, on Jeff's mind, um, is this idea of getting the community more familiar with it. I, and we would never want this to just show up in a school and kids having never seen it before, families never experienced it before. So, that is something that's a benefit with working with Evolve. We'd be happy to bring in the system for, we do community nights, we do, uh, maybe like a pilot at a, at a football game, for example, or a cheer event or something like that. So, families are experiencing it in a non-educational setting, um, for them to ask their questions, have our staff available. Um, so, I don't want to offer that, but I do know that's something that you were considering. And so, I just wanted to mention that that is an option for sure.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda.
Um, I wanted to reiterate that, you know, something that Jeff, you've made perfectly clear is that this is all done in layers. And, you know, we've been working tirelessly on the relationships between the students and, and faculties, the, the SROs, and now we have, you know, the whole security team and, um, the, it, the parent liaisons, like, everything that we've been doing over the past few years has been so focused on relationships. Now is a good time to implement something like this because those relationships are already there and this is just the extra layer, um, so that we can say more certainly, like, we have, you know, security measures in place to protect your babies while they're within, it, within our walls. Okay? So, um, you know, I, I am very much leaning towards, um, having some types of, of weapon detection system. But, with that being said, I would never want that to take away from the building relationships. You know, they really have to go hand in hand because, Jeff, you also mentioned too, like, there's no way that we would ever be able to stop a hundred percent of every single weapon coming into school. Like, you could use scissors, you could, you know, there's so many things that could be used as a weapon if you wanted to. So, having that relationship is, is most, like, I would say more important than having these, these weapon detection systems. But, that doesn't mean that we also shouldn't consider them as well, um, adding that extra safety, like, that level of safety. And, you know, some conversations that I've had with people in the community is, you know, they're like, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if it's going to make our school safer, then yeah, let's do it. So, they're not saying necessarily like, oh, I feel so unsafe, I need metal detectors. They're like, I would feel more safe. And, we've talked extensively too, that feeling safe within the school is what helps kids learn. So, I mean, maybe it's obvious, maybe it's not, but let's say hypothetically that this actually doesn't make schools safer. But it makes people feel more safer. You're going to have teachers who feel better about coming to work, you're going to have less burnout than, you know, wondering what's going to happen. You know, students themselves will feel safer knowing that, you know, the chances of a weapon coming into the district that could cause, you know, mass destruction is drastically reduced. And I wanted to ask a question too, of the two incidences that we know of where guns were in the school, would a system like this have prevented those from entering the school building? Based on what we know.
Yeah, I mean, obviously I can't say for sure, but they would have detected that weapon, yes.
Right, but it wasn't some, they weren't like, necessarily, it wasn't like so, they basically walked into the school with it in their bag.
Both came in in a backpack.
Right, so the fact that a system like this would have prevented those, like thank God we had the relationships. I'm not discounting those at all. But the, you know, I really am like thanking God that we had the relationships where students reported that. But if we could have prevented that from even getting past the front door, that would have been even better.
And both times, just to correct, and I don't want to cut you off, but it wasn't a relationship that any students told, it was a relationship of the staff knowing the student's behavior, witnessing a change in behavior.
Okay, so that, yes, I don't know if I was a hundred percent clear enough, but either way, the relationship aspect of it is important. And I wanted to reference too quickly the SFT survey that was put out, and metal detectors was the, right, was the word used.
So I use metal detectors.
Right, I just wanted to clarify it, like for the sake of my conversation. So, and the reason I'm kind of highlighting that too, is because metal detectors like proper have more of a negative connotation than like these, you know, more friendly, you can just walk in at normal pace. You know, they're scary, give the wrong impression, sort of. So with that being said, metal detectors was used in this survey, and the overwhelming majority of people said that they would feel safer having those implemented into our schools. And a question that I have is, and it could be an I wonder if no one knows the answer, but I noticed that elementary schools, those who responded to, that work in elementary schools, said that they would feel safer with metal detectors in place than either middle school and high school. So I want to make sure when we're talking about where we're going to put these, you got a smile on your face, I don't know, you waiting to say something?
No, I have thoughts.
Okay, you know, I just want to make sure that we are considering possibly putting them in the elementary schools as well, if it's going to make a big difference to the environment there.
So I will say a couple of things, and I will preface what I know and what I think. Also in the survey, it did say that, you know, it is truly our middle school where the SFT members who responded to the survey feel police safe. Right, when you're getting to fifty percent, and I don't, I can pull up the specifics, you have them as well. For the presentation tonight, I lumped together somewhat unsafe and unsafe. It gets up to fifty percent at the middle school, it was like thirty-five percent at the high school, and I believe eighteen percent at the elementary school. Elementary school teachers feel more safe in their buildings. They as a group slightly were more in favor of metal detectors, because again, I use that term, and I did choose to use that term thinking that that was the most extreme case, and I was like, I don't know where the district's going. I don't want to say like, also, to be honest, I don't want to get five hundred emails being like, what is a screening device? People knew what metal detectors were, so that's why I chose the word. I will say, you know, there was a slight uptick in elementary school teachers requesting it. Based on the personalities of the different levels, over time you do develop that, you do learn that different levels of teachers have different personalities. I'm not surprised by that. Again, going back to, when you look at the cell phone policy, I think that the elementary school has less issues with cell phones. And they're still like strict about wanting like rules. So there is this level, so I do think that's where that comes into a little bit. And again, the numbers aren't that different. Elementary, middle, high, with who wants them, as far as the SFT survey goes.
Between the elementary school and high school, there's over a ten percent difference. I mean, it's still majority, like they want these, they're safer more.
Yeah, I know, it's not ten to twenty, which is a bigger ten percent difference than sixty-six to seventy-four.
Right, yeah, almost eighty percent in the elementary school, meaning after they would be implemented, they would, eighty percent would feel safe.
Right, but it was already a high level of safety. So really, the biggest changes in the feelings of safety were at the secondary schools for that SFT survey. When you look at the survey, again, this is, this is me trying, you know, I'm not saying yes, no, any different. Elementary school teachers already did feel the most safe in their buildings. So the change when asked, okay, if we implemented metal detectors, there was less of a change there, we did feel more safe in their buildings. Again, the bigger change was, like, and again, I have my notes in front of me, but like, at the middle school dropping from fifty percent to ten percent. As opposed to dropping from eighteen percent to four percent.
All right, I see what you're saying now. I'm looking, so I was looking at like the total percentage and not so much the change.
Yeah, it's really, it's the, like, yeah, so, you know.
I see what you're saying now, yeah. And then there was a thirty-five percent change in the middle school, that they would be like, I definitely want these, yeah, I think. And then it was eight percent.
And I'm taking both things into account, what they said about their favoring it. And again, I think, designing a survey on my own, the thing I am most happy that I asked was, how do you feel now?
Yeah.
How would you feel?
Right, it is, I know, it was like a basic, just to get a feel, but it was helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I do have several I wonders, but I'm going to shift my question a little bit, because we're talking about the students. I'm wondering, from all of you, do we collect data of intruders? Not students, not because we see in a lot of schools across the country that there are outside people coming into the school. So I'm shifting it, because we are focusing on students, but I'm also, I'm more actually worried about people that we don't know coming into the school. So I'm wondering if we have any data, if Evolve, or even if we've had any, I don't know of any incidents, but maybe we do.
So it's kind of a, it'd be a, it's one of those things that we had a real problem with when I first got here, right? We didn't know who was in the building. We had a hundred and forty doors on the building, and they were all open. And at any point in time, there could be a parent, it could be a student from another school, there could, there were people in the hallways, all over the place. And so we've re-secured the building, we now have an entrance to every building, single point of entry, where we know who's in the building. We've had arrests with people who shouldn't have been in the building, they got into the building, whether they were let in by a student through a door somewhere. You know, we've done everything we can to make sure we know when those things happen. Specific data I do not have, but I know we had a few arrests with people trespassing in the building that don't belong, yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering in the future, because I remember those situations, because I think that can also maybe shed some light, that we are talking about students, but perhaps there should be other conversations about this weapons detection. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I was going to mention, you know, many of our schools, the big discussion point is when we use the system. So assuming that you're going to use the system, then if the next question is when and how, right? And some of our school buildings, after four o'clock in the afternoon, they're open in their community buildings. And so I don't know precisely each of your buildings, if you're going to be screening every single visitor, if you're going to be screening only students during morning entry, that'll be your decision to make. But I do have data based on different districts and what they've chosen to do that I can easily share.
A wonder for both of you, and I know you may not know this answer, because you're not there for the implementation, but I'm wondering, because if we even move, if we move in this direction, implementation, and I've shared that, that's my biggest concern, right? Because I'm, having the machine is one thing, but I have several questions here. First of all, does the machine sound?
It's your choice. So it can beep, or it can only be visual, it can be either cue, whichever you choose, and it also has a volume control, if you wanted the lower sound or higher.
Okay, from your experience, what has been the protocol, if you do know this? What has been the protocol? So let's say I go through the scanner, they find something that's suspicious, what happens then?
Do you want me to take this? Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so, so. And you can jump into, but like.
So I got her operated once.
I mean, this kind of goes back to what we were talking about earlier, that this is very building by building, even within a district. So we work with all of our customers, the implementation very hands-on. Multiple members of the Evolve team, I would be here, along with technicians that have been some of the largest school districts in the country, all over the place. We've done this a thousand times, literally, a thousand times. So it's different based on what kind of staff they have, you know, do they have dedicated security staff, do they not? All of that gets decided at the building level.
But typically, that individual who's working the first tablet is standing there and is welcoming students. I would say it would certainly be your choice, but that need not necessarily be a security individual based on your staffing, you know, availability. That person is looking for a red light or a green light, and eyes up, making connections with kids. So in a lot of schools, that's our first-year teachers, and it's part of their mentorship program to learn kids' names. It's our coaches, it's our food service workers looking for an extra hour, or paraprofessionals working in that station. So again, it could be any number of staffing solutions. Then if an individual does alert, that person is just saying either, come on through, come on through, usually hurrying kids, because the system is very quick, come on through. And then if they do alert, sending them to a secondary search. And that's where typically the security folks get involved in every district, and maybe both systems, both stations for your district. Where they would actually be searching where that red box suggests that there may be a weapon.
Do you know, and again, I know, I know that it varies from district to district, but I'm wondering, have you heard of district, or, you know, so you find something on me, you pull me aside, and again, I know different districts do it differently, am I searched there, or am I put in a room?
Different districts have different ways, many of them have a privacy screen. It really just depends on where, maybe if the weapon is on the body, they may use a screen versus if it's in a bag. You know, typically, they like to, you like to, as quickly as possible, separate the individual from the weapon. So if it's in a bag, it's just making sure that it's not in the student's hands anymore, or the visitor's hands anymore. It's done very differently in different places, yeah.
And then my other wonder is, do you know if any, maybe when we reach out to some of these school districts, have they taken surveys from families and students about how this process has made them feel?
Absolutely, and I can share some of those with you. One that comes immediately to mind is Prince William School District, it's a larger school district, and they surveyed their families before, after immediate implementation, and then months into it, I believe. And so there is some, not quite longitudinal, but some data over time, to see how they felt. What we are seeing a lot of across our fleet, and in our different customers, is having implementation in a certain number of buildings, and then, you know, being appreciative of it, happy about it, and then ordering more systems and expanding.
And I'm only asking this question because I read it with the, with the school district. But I did read initially, well, initially they had an AI system, then they switched over to your program. But there was, I mean, and you all can find, it's right in, it's in the newspaper, so I saw it. But there was a glitch, I read in the beginning, not really a glitch, but when students were coming in with their laptops, or their zippers, that would alert, you know, that's what I said in the article, that in, in some cases, it would sound off the device. So then they had a picture of the kids walking through the detection with their laptops extended. And this was North Carolina or South Carolina. And this, I don't remember the date, but I'm wondering if those types of glitches have been worked out? Because I know, you know, things can be improved.
Yeah, so not necessarily glitch. With any screening system that you're going to look at, a large electronic device like the laptop is going to most likely cause an alarm, depending on sensitivity levels and all that. So something we're very used to, and something that we have, you know, in the recent years, getting into more and more K-12 buildings, we have different procedures and best practices that we put in place, that you can decide what's best for your building to kind of make sure that that doesn't slow anything down.
We're trying to minimize divestment, right? We're trying to minimize disruption to students getting to learning. And so typically in many of our buildings, and again, not all of our buildings, they'll remove their Chromebook laptop. It depends on the model, it depends on the sensitivity, so I don't want to overspeak, because we're not sure yet how it would look here. But they will put it either on a table, for example, and walk through the system and then grab it. Or they may have an individual, if they have enough staff, standing there to pass it around. Or like in that district, I think in some of their buildings, not across the district, they're actually holding it, the red box is on the device. And so then you know that that is an alert that you can ignore. But there, we have an entire guidance document to help with that, in the event that you were to move forward, certainly.
Okay, so I guess some of what, where President Rivera just asked about, raised this question. So let's say the student goes through, right, and the detection goes off that there is something, but it's not in their bag, it's on their person. And I guess Jeff, now it's back to you, how are we handling this? Are we now going to have separate lines? Will have women here to physically search the young women, and the men staff searching the young men, and how does that slow things down if the student decides, I don't want to empty my pockets? Or whatever it is the case might be. Like, are we prepared to handle those types of situations? And have we kind of like thought that through? What would that process look like?
Yeah, no, we have not thought that through. So would I anticipate seeing that type of system? Yeah, sure, I would anticipate seeing it, male, female. I would anticipate, you know, having a private screen area or a private room. We've had discussions with, you know, with some of the construction coming, is there an area that we could kind of have off to the side that is a private screening room? Right now, like I said, with the high school with IDs, and in middle schools with the IDs, we already come in in an orderly way. And so they do already break off from line, if they forgot their ID, we print them another one. You know, we do already have a kind of an assembly line coming into the building right now. And so this would just be that extra layer that we add to that line. And I don't, you know, I think that, like I said, in high school, the opening day jammed up bad with IDs. Within a month or so, there was a free flow into the school, you know, it moved very fast. So I would anticipate the same kind of learning curve, but what you're asking really is a logistical question that I don't think we can answer until we know what we're dealing with and what we're looking at. And until we get to the point that we know we're going to move forward with something, there's no point in me trying to throw all the scenarios out there that could happen.
Would say the majority of nuisance alarms that would alert the system that are not a weapon are not typically, I don't want to oversee, not typically small enough to fit in your pocket. So it's not as common, like I know you're painting a picture, I would love for you to see it, maybe a video or in person, of morning entry in a school to kind of, to visualize it, because it's not a very common thing that we're padding down kids. It's just, it doesn't happen very often in most of our schools.
From the demonstrations I've seen, the only time you see a red box on a person's body at all is like when they have a holster on the go. Like that's when you see that red box on their body, because otherwise, there's really nothing attached to your body that's going to.
I was thinking cell phones or something like that, depending on the, you know, so, okay.
Depending on the sensitivity, if you have a cranked up.
Because it's cranked up, I'm thinking you might, I mean.
Again, I want to be very careful, but typically, because it is using that machine learning, many of our cell phones have been taught to the machine for to ignore it. So it would only be catching those cell phones that appear threatening to it, which is not common. We can get deeper into that maybe in a different security conversation.
So we're going to go to the SBR, I'm going to say that now, Joyce.
I was just wondering if you have any, I have a couple of questions, but do you have any data on the nuisances? And how many, what's the percentage, or maybe a failure rate, or this is like.
Absolutely, yes, and I can't share that in public session, but I certainly can share that with the board in closed session, yes. Again, it depends on the building, so I mean, if you wanted to know across all industries and across all machines, or just schools, or just New York schools, or, I mean, we could have a deeper conversation about that, but yes, we do have that information.
And also on data on percentage of weapons not detected, or percentage of firearms that were not detected by the system, or precautions found by the schools after the fact, and the more detected by the, by the school.
I have access to whatever any of the schools may have personally shared with us, but I wouldn't necessarily know, so I don't know how rich that data will be, but I'd be happy to talk through that, again, in a more private session.
Yeah, and we would, in a non-public session, we would be very specific with you guys about sensitivity levels, what they do and do not do on each one. But if we want to be very careful with sensitive security information in public session.
So I'm going to pause, oh, you can ask one more, go ahead. The last one, this one is for Jeff, sorry. Would the, if we went to, would this, would it be in our BOSEs programs? Or just the schools, or in the cities out there? Because some students in the high schools.
Sure, yeah. In my mind, I envision, if we move forward, everybody goes through a screening, like, because I want to be equitable, but I don't want to say, this group, we're okay with that group, or this group, we're okay with, like, I would want to try, and that would be my recommendation, is that everybody that we're dealing with goes through at some point in time, whether it's the BOSEs, you know, before they get on the bus, you know, there's different things. Kids that come and go in the morning time at the school, they still have IDs. Even the kids downtown, they still have their IDs, like there's buses that run from the high school. So I think there's a way to do it, and we would just have to pinpoint at different times when the different groups would pass through.
This would be something that we would, I don't know, I wasn't, not completely sure if BOSEs is a separate program from the high school, but would it be something that we would provide for the BOSEs, like this building, so that building is secure?
No, we would not, we would not, for the, for the BOSEs building, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, she's saying for the.
Yeah, no, we would not provide for the BOSEs. Hopefully, there'll be BOSEs available someday, and they'll buy their own machines and operate it themselves there. But, you know, I think that, I think that at the end of the day, we will deal with it on our district, on our campuses, and everybody else will deal with it on their own.
This is my last question. But even with the data, you said there is. But even with the data that you said there is less kids or there's, I don't know, I'm pretty sure it was four percent that felt that these weapons detection or metal detection would make school feel like prison. But how would we, for the kids who do feel that way, it would make kids feel like they're going to prison, how are we at school prepared to help them through that or just support them? Because with the computers, it's, if you're holding it out, it's still the same feeling that, don't worry, this is not a weapon. It's, it's a computer, so is there, are we prepared to?
That's an excellent.
Yeah, as with any system, education is a big piece. We talked with the cellphones and education. And I think that, um, if a student does struggle with it, um, or has some issue because of some personal experience, that they, they, they have a fear of the machine or, um, whatever it may be, it's an educational piece. And I think that's an opportunity for us. I think that's an opportunity to, to kinda educate on that. And, uh, you know, to, to really, um, you know, if we do it an equitable way, it'll show that we're not trying to target anybody. And, and I think that, um, those that have trauma from a system like that, from going to a prison to, to, to visit a loved one, I mean, it, it definitely kinda like what was, what was talked about with the curve, right? You know, you going into a prison does not look like this machine. It may feel the same to some students, in which case, we definitely would need to support them. And, and we would find the support that we need for them.
And then we just have one more, one last question. Board Member Amanda?
Super fast. Are these like stationary installed or can you move them dependent, like, for whatever reason?
I'm so glad you asked that. They're portable, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, non-permanent installation, so if everything's on wheels, um, all we need for its function is one standard wall outlet. Uh, we do not touch your network in any way, so. But, um, yeah, we don't need your network. It's a pretty, it's a standalone system. Um, one wall outlet, and then you can move the towers around, everything's on wheels, indoor and outdoor safety.
Thank you. This is not our last conversation. We're going to continue this conversation and to make sure that we're making the best decision for our students and looking at all the research and, you know, and asking you some more questions, Jeff. But I do wanna, I do wanna leave us with this, 'cause I think it's really important. Again, how do, and this is not saying either way, but if something were to happen as board members, we are responsible to express and say something to the parents. So I'm gonna reiterate this question. How do we, we reassure parents that their children are safe in our schools? And that's just something I want us to consistently think about in the back of our minds as we have these conversations. And again, this is not saying that the right choice is doing this, but it's also not saying that it's not the right choice. And I do want all of us to kind of, not kind of, to keep in our minds that the reality is that there is racism, racism, there is bias. And that, that's another layer that we really have to think about when we're going to implement this. And coming from, um, S, uh, S B R, Joyce, Student Board Representative Joyce, um, when she talks about, you know, how are we going to support, comfort those students that have experienced those things? That's a reality. Because even if it's whatever, four percent or whatever, that's still a human body, that's still our babies. So these are all things that we have to think about when we decide how we're gonna move forward. And I do, I mean, Jeff has said it over and over again, relationships is a huge thing. We still have to continue working on that in our district. We have great people who are, have great relationships, but the reality is, we have about two thousand, one thousand members and then, right? How many members do we have?
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred, and that's eighteen hundred, and that's not including other staff members. That's a lot of human beings with a lot of characteristics.
We don't have eighteen hundred teachers.
Okay, yeah, no, no.
Eighteen hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, so again, I'm just throwing this out at the finale of this conversation today, but there are so many layers that we have to look at through very different lenses. Um, and I think the survey that was collected from a variety of different sources can help also shape our conversation further as we continue. So I do wanna thank the board. This is not an easy topic at all. And it's filled with a lot of emotion. For some of us, it's personal, 'cause we may have also, um, been challenged with how we were treated when we went through these types of processes. So I just want everyone to kinda keep everything that was discussed and some of the things that I said are all of the things.